Welcome, everyone. I now call the May 6, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position
number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present, thank you.
I'm the only one who's supposed to crack jokes around here.
Amanda's working on her dad cred. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. And we don't have any council attending remotely tonight. So first up is meeting agenda approval. City Manager Stanner, I'm gonna reach out to you first on this one.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. For your consideration tonight, we do have a proposed amendment to the agenda. It shouldn't affect too much in terms of order of business, but we are looking to add an executive session to the end of the meeting pursuant to RCW 4230 dot 1101B. And it would be to consider the acquisition of real estate. We're estimating that executive session will take up to 45 minutes. And so if you are in agreement with that, we'd be looking for a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session. You don't have to read the RCW into the record. We'll take care of that. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Vote.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Perfect. Are there any other changes to the meeting agenda? Nope. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to add a 45-minute executive session to the end of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Manke. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none?
We'll just add a quick clarification. There is no action at the end of the executive session. I meant to say that.
Oh. Perfect. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Fantastic. Next up is public engagement opportunities. You can join us for a transportation workshop. If you want to drive less but don't know where to start, curious about EVs, you can attend a workshop at City Hall where you can learn about resources, talk to experts, and share feedback that will make up Bothell's first climate action plan: childcare and snacks provided. It's on May 10 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's that time of year, again, the pop-up dog park is back. It's at Bothell Landing starting on May 23, just in time for Memorial Day weekend. It's open through September, and this seasonal off-leash space is perfect for both small and large dogs to play all summer long. On the pet theme, we have free pet vaccines and first-time licenses. You can bring your dogs and cats to the Bothell Police Department for a special pet fair and free vaccine clinic. First-time pet licenses will also be free for Bothell residents during this event, which is June 20, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Next up is proclamations, and we have one proclamation tonight for National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 19 National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which it falls is National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. And whereas there are approximately 1,280,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 78 dedicated members of the Bothell Police Department, and whereas since 1786, more than 26,000 law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty, including 319 officers from Washington State, and whereas in 2024, 147 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers died in the line of duty, including one from Washington State, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Peace Officers' Memorial on Tuesday, May 13, and whereas both the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial and the Washington State Law Enforcement Memorial bear the name of our own officer, Jonathan Shoup, who died in the line of duty on July 13, 2020, while heroically serving Bothell, and whereas we recognize that every day, police officers risk their lives to help and protect others. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2025 Police Week in the City of Bothell, and publicly acknowledge the brave service of law enforcement officers in Bothell and communities across the nation. And I know we have folks from our police department, including our Chief Kinsler, like here, to accept.
All right. Well. Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager Stanner. It is with deep pride and sincere gratitude that I stand before you this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of the dedicated staff of the Bothell Police Department. In a time when challenges facing law enforcement are complex and evolving, this proclamation stands as a meaningful reminder of the unwavering commitment shown by our officers and staff each and every day. It affirms not only the risks they take, but the values they uphold of courage, integrity, and service to others. Police Week is a time that reflects on recognition, reminding us of the sacrifices made by those who have taken an oath to serve and protect, including those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. It is also a time to celebrate the vital role law enforcement plays in keeping our communities safe, just, and connected. Our officers serve as guardians responding to crises, protecting the vulnerable, and ensuring that all people, regardless of background, status, are treated with fairness, dignity, and respect. Behind every badge is a commitment, not just to enforce law, but to build trust, offer compassion, and make meaningful differences. As Chief of Police, I could not be prouder of the work our team does each day. From the officers on patrol to the professional staff behind the scenes, they serve with integrity, resilience, and heart. They meet challenges head-on and do so with quiet strength that reflects the highest standard of public service. But even as we honor these achievements, we recognize the ongoing importance of collaboration between law enforcement and the community we serve. Building trust is not a one-time task. It is a continuous effort grounded in transparency, empathy, and mutual respect. By working together, we move closer to a safer, more inclusive community where all voices are heard and valued. In closing, I thank you for this proclamation. It is a meaningful expression of support that affirms the purpose and professionalism of those who wear the badge. On behalf of our entire department, thank you for standing with us during Police Week and every week.
And Chief, while you're there, I just want to say to you and your team that's here and the rest of the team, just thank you. You guys have a uniquely difficult job, and since I've been here, you and your whole team have done it in a way that's really easy to be proud of. So just thank you for the work you do, especially when we remember Officer Shoup and know that there's no guarantee of going home when you clock in for a shift. So just thanks to everybody here and beyond. We appreciate you up here a lot.
And again, we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comments in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak, and please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you. We have one person signed up to speak this evening. That is Randy Banneker.
We're not gonna make Randy wait for like two and a half hours before he gets to hear a public comment this time?
No.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, members of the Bothell City Council. I'm Randy Banneker, here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors, and I'm here to thank you for your work on the sign code and thank your staff for their work on the sign code. You've been extraordinarily responsive to our concerns. The draft before you tonight, we're in full support of. It brings you, it achieves the goal of being compliant, particularly with the Supreme Court And it's also understandable, and so people can actually read what regulations you're adopting. That's important, and it will enable the ongoing use of signs like ours and longstanding use. It's simple and straightforward, and I really thank you for that. And that sounds, it sounds like such a simple thing to say, but you're a standout, you're one of the standouts in the region in terms of taking on this process and just making it understandable and usable for those of us who rely on signage. With that, I just want to thank you and urge your support.
Thank you. That is all I have signed up for this evening. If there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. I do not see anybody, and we don't have anybody online. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the City Manager report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again to the City Council for your support of staff in general and this week specifically for our police department. I know that your appreciation means a lot for the work that they do, so thank you. We have two presentations tonight, but before we turn to those, I wanted to give you a brief update on a project unfolding just across the street and down a little bit from us, and that is the temporary activation of Lot EF&amp;G down on the corner of 522 and Bothell Way. You've no doubt been tracking progress and seen what looks to be like close to completion, and I have good news that Phase 1 is set to wrap up, no jinx, this week. We have now received inspections on two-thirds of the inspections required. We have one remaining, and with that, furniture is being outfitted into the pop shops themselves. We are in final negotiations with four additional pop shops, which will, presuming we get under contract, we'll be announcing who will be those tenants soon. And again, those four additional shops will be part of the same small business program that the other four shops operate under, which really gives inspired business owners an opportunity to try out their business model without having the heavy burden of a long-term lease in an expensive location. So we're excited to move forward with that. Following the inspection, what you'll also see is some of the Phase 1 activation that we've been talking about, which includes installation of seating with picnic tables, and we're excited to get that moving forward. You'll also see that there is a American with Disabilities Act compliant walking path that has been installed there to give access not only to the additional shops, but also to the next part of Phase 1 that we're completing, which is solicitation of, similarly to with the pop shops, but for food trucks. So maybe not even trucks, but food businesses that are aspiring. And what's exciting about that, too, is that those businesses will have the opportunity to do something even more flexible than the shops, since we don't rotate who's occupying the shops on a day-to-day basis, but the food trucks will have that flexibility. So we're excited to move forward with that soon and getting that solicitation out within the week. Additionally, you'll see then some parking stops to delineate where that food truck area is. So we're looking forward to that. The next thing to be aware of is that, as we've been discussing, there is a Phase 2 to this project. And again, the good news is this first phase involved moving of land and some clearing-grade work, which is where the time really goes into things. We have all of that approved. So with Phase 2, as we move forward, the implementation of that is estimated at four to six days. So not weeks, not months, but days. So once we have that all lined up, it'll go very, very quickly. And council, you can expect to see in the coming weeks both funding, we're gonna have to allocate funding for that project for Phase 2, and so that'll be a question before you, but then also amendments to the existing contracts with the vendors we've been working with to do the additional work. So again, it'll be relatively quick, but there will be some decisions before you. And again, just to give you a picture of what that includes is Phase 2 will have some art installations to really activate the space. They'll have some sales to provide shade during the summer months. It will have a fence along 522 for both a little bit of a sound barrier, but also for safety, and some other features as well. So we're looking forward to speaking more with you about that, and you can look for that in the upcoming weeks. And by that, I think, on the out, we're looking at like the first meeting of June. So this will be relatively soon. We're really looking to get the full activation of Lot EF&amp;G for the summer for the community to enjoy. So we're looking forward to that. As I transition, we'll go to the first staff report, and I'll just note that none of that work can be possible without being able to be in a good financial position to do so, so we're thankful for that. Council had expressed interest in renewed periodic updates of financial condition, and we are here tonight to provide a closeout of the last biennium. That does take, as we've mentioned, there's always a little bit of a lagging in terms of getting all of the numbers together. Our Finance Director, Kwan Wong, is with us tonight. He is gonna review where we ended 2024. I'll also note, just for clarity, while we post PowerPoints online on Mondays, we did, this one came in a little bit afterwards, so council, you do have printed copies in front of you, and for the public, we will be adding that to the Presentations folder, but none of the information presented tonight is new outside of the packet. So it's just really to help make sure we're all looking at the same numbers at the same time. So I thank Finance Director Kwan Wong for that. With that, I'll turn things over to Kwan to walk you through the financial conditions of the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. I am very pleased to appear before you and report out how we ended the 2023 and 24 biennium. So thank you, Amy, again, for putting the PowerPoint on. So again, for tonight's, the purpose is to give you a report out. This is a briefing, and no council action is requested for tonight. Overall, the CILY budget ended with some one-time surplus in terms of the CILY-wide revenues and expenditures. So this is both restricted and unrestricted funds. So this is combining the total, again, one CILY, one budget. How did we end up last year? So for the year-end fund balance, we received $383.5 million in revenues, and we'll talk more about the general fund revenues a little bit later. We spent $359.8 million in expenses. So if you do the quick math, we do have a little bit of over $25 million in fund balance, but want to emphasize, most of the money is a one-time thing, and I highlighted some of them. The first and foremost is the technical transfer of remaining, close to about $5 million from Aper that we didn't want to turn back to the U.S. Treasury, and we did some accounting method to transfer the money to the general fund. So right now, all the projects are still in the pipeline, and we're able to spend the money because it is in our bank rather than being held up with the federal government. We got some surprises, about $12 million more in interest earnings than projected. We also got a higher-than-expected, close to $2 million in school zone speed tickets than projection. So to emphasize, we want to make sure that the school zone camera program is really a safety-first program, so we don't expect the revenue will remain this high as we are able to really work with the driving community that this is a school zone and do not speed. Another surprise is the $12 million more in interest earnings. So we have done some active managing of our portfolio, so every night, the money that we don't need, we will transfer to our state investment pool. So one day at a time or one night at a time, we are able to manage what we have. And again, all of you have been hearing that the Federal Reserve may be or may not be lowering the interest rate. So it's everybody's guess whether we can maintain this high of an interest rate. So we are very careful in how we spend the money. And then the third area is really related to the CFP. Some of the capital projects were not able to complete, so there's a timing gap. So that's why you see a higher-than-expected fund balance. So the next slide is, we will talk about more on the general fund, because this is where we have the most flexibility. Now, having said that, we do have the flexibility, but at the same time, we have some challenges that we are managing at this time. And specifically, out of the fund balance, $16 million of that is general fund. But again, this is a one-time money that we have in the bank. I'm also happy to report out that we achieved close to 99% of expenditure rate, so meaning all the general fund departments, we spent about $140.5 million in the biennium out of a $142 million budget. This is incredible, so I thank our CILY staff and the management team to be able to manage what we have instead of coming to you asking for money. So again, we will continue this practice. These are good news, but at the same time, we have a couple factors to watch as we go through the next biennium, '25 and '26. One major question is, how are we going to manage inflation? Inflation at this time of the year, out of the March report, we are at about 3.6%. The majority of our expenditure, almost close to 75% of our expense, is in salary. And in our 2026 budget, we included a 4% cooler. But if inflation is higher than 4%, that means we have to find money to absorb the cooler, and we have incredible staff here, and we want to keep them. So that's a big thing that we are watching. The next big item is, how are we going to see our state and federal grants? If you recall, this capital facilities plan, more than 51% of the revenues, they come from federal and state grants. So it's money that we have worked very hard to get, and we will be working very hard to keep. We may need to move projects up and down, so we'll be coming back to you throughout the year to adjust the CFP timeline, and you will see one pretty soon. And that's totally because of what happened to the state when they closed their budget shortfall. And again, we are watching federal grants very closely. So revenues, how are we doing and what did we do the last biennium? If you look at most of the revenues in front of you, except fines and forfeiture and other miscellaneous, and that is really interest earnings. All of the other major revenues really came close to projection. I thank my staff in their hard work in projecting how much we would get, and that's not an easy job, because that was done almost like two years ago in order to put together their budget. Property tax, sales tax, business and utility tax, they all came in close to 1% to 2%. So that's incredible job, again, thanks to our staff. Again, I mentioned about our surprises, the other miscellaneous, close to $12 million more in interest earnings. The next big revenue is the fines and forfeiture. We got about $2 million more, as I mentioned before, but we don't see those repeating. We will work hard to manage our portfolio so that we will achieve similar results, but that's a lot of work, and we will, again, do our best, but we don't see that repeating anytime soon. So we are monitoring other revenues very closely. We are seeing some weakness in sales and use tax based on the revenue we got from February. So we may see weakness in people spending because of the economy and the uncertainties, but that's anybody's guess. I'm not sitting here to be the official economist predicting what will happen between now and the end of the year, so we will keep watch very closely. And as Kyle mentioned before, we will be doing our quarterly update so that you won't be surprised by the end of the year where we will be ending up. We will have some major decisions to make regarding some major programs that will need funding down the road. So with that, I will stop here and see if I can answer any of your questions tonight.
You're gonna lose your chance if you don't go soon. Councilmember Kerr?
Thank you. Thank you, Director. I don't have any questions, but I did want to just shout out your team and also city staff who are keeping track of budgets on programs, large and small. We get good news like this because people are tracking what they're spending, and so thanks to everyone in the city for keeping close watch on their budgets makes our lives a lot easier and to really respectful of our community's fundings. So shout out to everyone at the city.
Kwan, there's nothing that I really enjoy more than you bringing us a really boring presentation. And I hope that your presentations continue to be boring for as long as we are both here. So, oh, Councilmember Alderks, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate a very not stressful budget report, and so I'm glad that you came to give us the end-of-year budget for the last year and things, you know, up until at that time, to be on a good track. And so thank you for this presentation. And I know that we're all kind of waiting to see what future presentations might be, and they might not be as reassuring as this one. So we'll wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other snappy one-liners, but thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Council. Our next update is just a quick briefing to reorient you to an upcoming public hearing that you'll be holding related to the Transportation Improvement Program. I think many of you will remember this from last year, and probably the biggest question is, in my experience, has been around, how does this relate to the Capital Facilities Plan? And so we want to make sure that we clarify that of what's coming and why we're doing it. And so with that, we just have a brief staff report to reorient you. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to our Deputy Director of Public Works, Steve Morikawa, as well as Sherman Gong, our transportation planner, who is leading this effort, and I appreciate them both for being here tonight.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to provide you a briefing about the draft 2026 to 2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program that I will refer to as the TIP from here on. This briefing is to give you an overview of the TIP, and no action is requested from council tonight. I will remind you what the TIP is and quickly go over how it was developed and how it compares to the Capital Facilities Plan. I'll also go over what the next steps are to complete the approval of the TIP. So the TIP is a list of funded transportation projects and programs that are essentially a transportation subset of the current Capital Facilities Plan. a transportation subset of the current Capital Facilities Plan. So you've seen all these projects before. It includes the six-year budget for project expenses and revenues to fund those projects, and it also includes a map and project descriptions for each of those projects. But unlike the CFP, the TIP is required to be updated annually, and projects often need to be on the TIP to qualify for funding grants. As I mentioned previously, the TIP is a subset of the current Capital Facilities Plan. It utilizes the process that was followed to develop the CFP projects, including the public outreach. Projects from the previously approved TIP that were completed last year or will be completed by the end of this year are removed. This TIP version also reflects the recently adopted 2024 Comprehensive Plan. So although the TIP utilizes the transportation project list from the Capital Facilities Plan, which is a seven-year plan, the TIP is a six-year program and does not include the 2025 funded projects that are expected to be done by the end of the year. Also not included in the TIP this year is the Thirty-Fifth Avenue Southeast Multimodal Project, since it was not prioritized high enough in the Comprehensive Plan. So the next step will be to hold a public hearing for the draft TIP next Tuesday, May thirteenth. This will be followed by the council meeting on May twentieth for consent on approving the resolution to adopt the TIP. And finally, staff will submit the adopted program to the state by July first. As we mentioned at the beginning, no council action is requested tonight. Thank you for your time, and take any questions you may have.
Three. Okay, Councilmember Zornz.
Just real fast, I'm really looking forward to this, because this gives us our marching orders and gives something, the community, something to look forward to. So I'm looking forward to these next steps and getting that submitted, and then ready ourselves for the work. So thank you for the work you've done.
You're welcome.
Tito, looking forward to it. Appreciate you guys. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the city manager portion of the reports section. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We have council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. Seems like a long time ago now, because we had a long recess last month, but we had a NMPRSA North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area meeting on the sixteenth of April. The main topic of discussion was the renewal of the levy that's set to expire this year. We had a pretty good discussion about levy rates and whether or not we should select somewhere between four cents and six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. The consensus was around five cents per assessed value, which is about four dollars a month. And the reason for that was the list of capital repairs that were required on our buildings to make sure that they were in proper order and not going to cause additional issues later was pretty much funded by a point five cents per thousand dollar levy. So it looks like we are going to move forward with that as a recommendation to the community to be approved by voters, and that will come before the Service Area Board in the next month or two for sending forward. So that is NPRSA. And then I just happened to see a city email go out this week recognizing the Public Works Department for reaccreditation. So I wanted to just say congratulations to the director and her staff. The award is of reaccreditation by the American Public Works Association, is in recognition of their excellence. So congrats. Thank you for all the good work that you do. I know our community appreciates it as they see people out and they see the work, or they don't see the work that goes on behind the scenes as well. So thank you for all that you do.
Council will never wish away Police Week, but I will entice you that Public Works Week is coming, so we'll make sure you know about that.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I've got an update from the North King County Coalition on Homelessness, met on Thursday, April seventeenth. One thing to know is that Affordable Housing Week is coming up, and next week, there is a luncheon learn hosted by NUSA on the fourteenth, and Bothell United Methodist will also be projecting it live, so whoever wants to show up in person can attend and learn about the challenges facing housing in our community. Professor from the University of Washington, author of Is That Homelessness is a Housing Problem, is going to be presenting and speaking to his work, and that is open to the community. Next up, we had an update from the KCRHA, which is the Regional Homelessness Authority. There are efforts to transition from emergency shelter to seasonal shelter, which provides more stable and predictable shelter options during cold and hot months. But as that transition is happening, is taking place, there's ongoing efforts to implement severe weather shelter in the interim. There is not currently one located in northeast King County in our area. The closest one is St. Dunstan's in Shoreline. And then the Coalition also requested that KCRHA bring back a presentation to update everybody on the effectiveness of the interlocal agreement that has been in place for the last three years, and that is the partnership of the five cities that are helping support the work of KCRHA. Then we heard updates from member organizations and community partners, including Lake City Partners. Shelter referrals will be opening the morning of April twenty-first, so that means that window is usually closed. When they open up that window, it's usually open for only a couple of days, and they're able to get all the referrals that can keep them busy for the next, until the next time they open up referrals. Here in Haven, the shelter in Kenmore is accepting referrals for women over forty, and they're starting to provide a similar model for men through the enhanced shelter in Shoreline. So the efforts to bring people together who maybe have low, lower incomes that they can't, or fixed incomes that can't afford market-rate housing, making those connections and helping bring together roommate situations is an ongoing effort to keep seniors more stably housed. And that's my update from the Coalition on Homelessness.
I wanted to share a quick community update. I am sorry to share that Rod Lovelace, who was one of the developers of Country Village, passed away at ninety-nine. Country Village is something that we no longer have, but that a lot of people still talk about and think about, so I just wanted to share that. There is an obituary in the Seattle Times.
Councilmember Curd.
Another community update. During the hiatus on council for the past two weeks, due to the last fourth and fifth weeks of the month in April, two weeks ago, wanted to highlight that State of the City happened at Cascadia's Mobius Hall. There were remarks by the city manager and the mayor, and Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, council members, Aldrich Dodd, and myself were there to kind of respond to questions and be there to represent the city. Well-attended by members of the community in the Bothell-Kenmore Chamber. And then last week was Law Day, and Law Day was really a great event put on by the city, and it was where students from Bothell High School and North Creek High School came to learn more about government. So students from ninth through twelfth grade filtered through, well, I didn't see what they did at the municipal court or the police station, but here in the council chambers, they were split up into seven table groups representing each council member and got to see how their policies were deliberated, and they were introduced to the council vision. And it was a really exciting time to see students engaging in local government, and that's something that I wish I had when I was their age, and I'm glad that our partnership with the school district is strong enough to provide that resource for them.
I'll sneak in on that, and just wanted to thank our court administrator, Courtney, who was bringing students over as we went through three different sessions, and also to our city clerks department, and to Assistant City Manager Becky Range, who did a great job talking about what a city manager does with no need for a microphone.
I'm gonna double-dip and say, well done. It was a good session. It was good to see that. It was good to see the students in here, learning about city government and process, and hopefully, we'll see some of them someday here as staff members or city council members or on boards of commission. So thanks and well done to staff.
I'll also jump in, since it's sort of a conversation time anyway, and just give some praise to Gabby and Christine, who were also involved. And I don't exactly know who was put together the packet of information for students, but very well done. So well done, in fact, that I took five home, and we'd had a family council meeting where my kids were introduced to the priorities of the city. So we got our own little mini family law night, and it was, it was really, just really well put together. So, yeah, thank you for everyone who was involved in that. And city manager, you really missed out.
You know, the best part of that, though, is that there was, there was some question if I was gonna be able to participate or not, and the team moved ahead and did such a great job that swooping in at the last minute would have just screwed it up. So I was really pleased with that. Thank you, council members, for the feedback, and we'll definitely be sure to pass along those kudos. I do want to note that, thank you to Councilmember Dodd for the, to the recognition of our court administrator, Courtney White, who, at the direction and real encouragement of Judge Razzano, does, has taken on Law Day as an opportunity to reach out to the youth in the Bothell community, and really puts a lot of her heart and soul into it, and a lot of logistics stem from the court, and then does a great job of turning to both the police department for that connection, but then also the executive office to coordinate with you, the council, and then with our team to represent the legislative and executive branch of the government as well. And as I'll say, when Assistant City Manager Range put out a call for volunteers in the executive office, our team responded and did bring a lot of creative energy to this portion of it. So, yeah, someday, maybe we'll split up and have council members be able to go observe what happens over at the court as well, but I know a lot of, a lot of real good work did take place.
City manager, I also have a question about the State of the City. Will that video be put up on YouTube?
Yeah, so it's in the process of some last finishing touches. I don't want to jinx it. I'd say this week, but we have gotten the video back, and there's always the act of making sure we get audio going so it sounds the best, and everything's all lined up. But our videographer has completed that, and we are in the midst of just a few final edits, and we'll get that posted and communicated out to the community for anybody who missed it.
All right. Next up, we have projected agenda discussion. Don't see anybody, so I would love to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrich, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Zornz.
Yeah, just briefly, I would like to put eyes on Agenda Bill twenty-five zero seven nine, where some neighbors, I spent a few times having conversations with neighbors who were concerned about regaining their property that they were paying property tax on, and I just want to thank staff for cleaning that up for the neighbors, because that was something that was really weighing on them, and I'm sure nothing has changed since I have talked to them, and they're also very appreciative. So thank you for doing that.
City clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right. With that, we can get to our ordinances and resolutions. We have updates to chapters twelve point two-two and twelve point six-four Bothell Municipal Code Sign Code. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Again, we do have one ordinance before you to update the municipal code. We're gonna get the PowerPoint loaded and then turn things over to our planner, Megan Rigney, from the Community Development Department, to remind you of how we got here, what the code changes will do, and response to the feedback we received during the public hearing. With that, I'll turn things over to Megan.
Good evening. So yes, I'm Megan Rigney, and I'm presenting tonight on the Sign Code, the Phase One Legal Update Ordinance. So tonight, we are asking city council to approve an ordinance amending Bothell Municipal Code, chapters twelve point two-two and twelve point six-four, which refer to the Sign Code. The purpose of the Sign Code is that it regulates sign types, sizes, and placement in Bothell to protect safety, preserve aesthetics, and comply with federal law. This Phase One focuses on legal compliance with recent Supreme Court rulings, and Phase Two, which will be later this year, is a broader modernization effort. We updated the code to remove commercial and non-commercial content distinctions and just have content neutrality. On April fifteenth, we held a public hearing, and we heard one community member commented and expressed general support, and asked a question about size limits for temporary on-premise signs in residential zones. At the time, the draft could propose a two-square-foot limit, but based on the public comment that we heard, the final draft presented to the council tonight has a five-square-feet for on-premise temporary signs in residential zones. So again, we're asking for you to consider and approve an ordinance amending Bothell Municipal Code. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Anybody? Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. I am completely unsurprised that you pivoted and took into account the public comment we received, but I thank you for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just say the same thing, like, thanks. I appreciated this last time, and I appreciate the fact that we just corrected one issue and made somebody happy.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. I believe action is required on this one, if anybody would like to. Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we would approve the ordinance updating Bothell Municipal Code, chapters twelve point two-two and twelve point six-four Sign Code.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Manki, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have contracts and agreements, and thank you, Megan. We have professional services supplement number one with Transport Group. City manager.
Thank you again, Mayor. We do have one contract before you, and I'll just note that while we have a very brief presentation on this one, we do recognize that if we were, we were turning to data and thinking of data analyzing, what's the topic that the city council hears from the most frequently from our community, it would probably be related to tonight's agenda. So we wanted to just provide you some additional context on a contract we're proposing for approval tonight. With that, I'm gonna turn things back over to our Public Works team. We're joined again by our Deputy Director, Steve Morikawa, as well as Engineer Christopher Stillwell. With that, I will turn it over to Christopher.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy, or Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of the council. I'm Christopher Stillwell, project engineer in Public Works. We're here tonight to request approval for a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services supplement for the Transport Group to continue to allow us to use their services via their transportation design projects on contract. The existing contract is ninety thousand dollars, and supplement number one will increase the not-to-exceed limit to two hundred thousand dollars. Transport Group completed their first design package this past year, in twenty-four, and constructed in the winter. There is insufficient funds to fund their second transportation design package. There is insufficient funds to fund their second transportation design package. And approval of this resolution will allow us to continue their effort and work towards construction of that second package this year. Any questions?
We're not in a very questioning mood tonight, I don't think. Sorry. Anybody? Yeah, go for it.
Not a question, but an observation, general observation. Just kudos to the leadership team for bringing the rest of the team members to be presenting to us and getting on the hot seat. So maybe it's not a thanks. It's like, I don't know what you did to get punished like this, but, you know.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, so just kudos to the team for, you know, giving opportunities like this for others. Good job. Thank you.
Actually, wait, I've got 14 questions. No. Thank you guys very much. All right, yeah. I think we just need a motion. Councilmember Dodd.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Second.
We got a Snohomies thing going on tonight. I've got a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Manke. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirk?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. We are going to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to RCW 4231101B. It is 6:51 right now, and we will be adjourning at 7:30 with no action.